Everybody, it's a little bit after meeting time. We'll call the meeting to order. This is our regular scheduled council meeting for the month of March. We've got a long agenda tonight, so we will get rolling. First item is the pledge. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, under, under public comments, Mr. Eggers, you're on items twenty-two and twenty-three. That's a ways down the line. We'll just hang on to you until then. Is that okay? All right. Hopefully, we'll be there before midnight.
Hey, uh, just, sorry to put that just up there. I think he wants to speak. God don't give him to sign the sheet, but he was going to speak on the phone over here.
Which one?
Put it, uh, uh, Mr. What did you do up there? On, uh, what did you, what were they on pulling? Yeah. He wants to speak then.
All right, so.
He didn't get to sign it.
Yeah, that's okay. We've got a public hearing then, so I'll just make sure.
You know, I'll tell him to sign it. Try to get him to sign it.
Yeah, we'll do that when we get to the public hearing.
All right, appreciate it.
You bet. Okay, um, so that takes us to item one A, which is to consider approving minutes of council meeting held on February thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Those minutes are in your packet. As you can see, that was also quite a long meeting. If everybody had a chance to glance at those.
I will say on item three, um, it says item two was tabled, so I've changed that already to item three.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'm just gonna, on item eight, I'm gonna add, instead of just saying item was tabled, I'm gonna say item eight was tabled. Just something like that.
Okay. All right, good. Anything else to be pointed out? All right, with that, is there a motion under item one A?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes with the notice, correct?
Second. Thank you. There's a motion of second under item one A. Uh, any other questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. To, uh, item two is discussion possible action regarding approval of resolution R dash three dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution of the City Council of McGregor, Texas authorizing the submission of a Texas Community Development Block Grant Program application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for the Community Development Fund. Somebody gonna touch on this? Oh, this one's on. I was Client Services Manager.
This is not, oh, the resolutions that we can have in Florida?
This is on the CDBG grant that we're, uh, this is one of the steps in us preparing to apply for the grant. So this isn't one that's been awarded yet. This is some of the require, two resolutions that we have to do. What, what was that, that, uh? Oh, you just gave them a copy of the resolutions?
So I gave them that, and then also just key talking points for the civil rights, point twenty-two.
You've got that?
Yeah, I see that.
So is it on the next page, Cassie? No, I don't, I guess it's just the resolution titles. Yeah, okay, so y'all have it in your packet. Um, there was also a list of explanations because I know on, uh, resolution three, it, uh, there were some things that were a little uncomfortable for myself until I read the definitions and, and what it exactly meant and spoke with our grant works, Olivia Baumgarten.
Yeah, and she unfortunately couldn't be here.
Yeah, and so, uh, I don't know if y'all have any questions. A lot of that, like one of them, the fair housing that we had to do something, it's already been done. Grant Works actually came to town and put up, uh, some flyers in some different businesses, uh, and that's satisfied that qualification. It earned us two points, uh, extra points on the grant. Uh, and then the, uh, use of force, I was a little bit, oh wait, but then when you read it, it's on nonviolent, that we agree we won't use use of force on nonviolent demonstrators. Um, I don't see that as a problem after I, after I read that. So I don't know if y'all have any questions?
I don't have a question, but just for the new folks here and people maybe listening, let's do a brief summary of why we're here, how we got to this point.
Well, we decided we wanted to, uh, try for a, a CDBG grant. Uh, we're looking at, um, redoing the electrical at the wastewater plant. And right now, uh, I just got it today, a copy from Walker Partners of an estimate of four hundred and forty-eight thousand, and that's, we're asking for five hundred thousand. It has a fifty thousand dollar match. Y'all approved it in this last year's budget, uh, and so this is just one of the steps getting us closer to the application process.
And when will the process be complete, we think?
Twenty twenty-six, I believe, is what, our, our, before we get it.
No, no, for the application.
Oh, for the application?
So the application deadline is April third, uh, and then probably around October, we'll know if we're awarded the grant. Um, and then, I don't know when the, the project completion date, um, so.
So we won't meet again until our application is finalized and submitted?
The.
Our application for the grant.
The City Council when I meet again. I'm sorry. Um, that's correct.
Okay, so tonight's our last night. To ask any questions, to make sure we've got in place what we need to.
Yes, we just received these, was it last week, Angie? Just last week, the two resolutions. I sent them to Charlie, had Charlie review, uh, and then got them back Friday.
Okay, and sir, I don't know, maybe you can answer this or not.
Sure.
What do you feel like our chances of, uh, of getting this? We've, we better than fifty percent or not?
Yeah, so before we go into any community, we're gonna score the communities and look at the criteria of the scoring and go to those communities because they have the best shot.
And so you think we're gonna be in the upper edge of those communities with a good shot?
Yeah, absolutely.
And again, what's the date when we would find out? You say October?
Probably around October.
Okay, and it's a ten percent match, so we're gunning for a five hundred thousand dollar grant, and we would put up fifty thousand, and we think a big part of it would be spent at the wastewater facility? Okay, okay.
So this is just another process. I think the deadline for all the CDBG grants is April third.
With CDBG, do you really need to do something for points if it's been high?
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
That's why he said the wastewater plant touches all of us.
Counsel, any other questions? Anybody? And are you Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Okay, anything else you, we need to know?
No, no, I, as far as I know, the project's going well, um, you know, in constant communication, and this is just another step in the process.
Carolyn, anything else on this item?
No.
Okay. All right, with that, is there a motion under resolution, item two, R three twenty-three? Yes?
Sir.
There's a motion of second under item two. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all of them, uh, approved, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so keep rolling. Um, okay, so item three then, related. That was last time, I bet. Okay, okay, so three, related is discussion possible action regarding approval of resolution R dash four dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution of the City Council of McGregor, Texas, authorizing McGregor representatives in matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. Anything here to add? Yep, so it says essentially that the mayor and city, city manager, city planning shall serve as the authorized executive that can execute the grant. Um, yeah, just gives authority to somebody at the city to, uh, execute documents. All right, and are any questions about item three, resolution R dash four dash two thousand and twenty-three? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution R dash four dash two thousand and twenty-three.
A second.
So motion of second under item three. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries, uh, to item four. That was Jacob? Okay, so item four, we're gonna hold until our engineering representative shows up, Jacob Henson. Uh, looks like we can go to item five, does not involve him. Discussion possible acts regarding approval of emergency management service agreement between Corial Memorial Hospital and the City of McGregor.
Counsel, we reached the end of our five-year agreement with the memorial, with Corial Memorial, and, uh, we missed it a little bit, continued it, and then still had some language to work out between Carolyn and Charlie and their CEO. Uh, that has been done. This was scheduled to be on the last meeting, uh, which would have been a little more timely. Uh, but we still had some language to work, so we went ahead and pulled it. That's been done, and what you have before you is the latest and greatest, the biggest thing you'll notice is the price has gone up from seventy-five thousand a year to a hundred thousand a year, and we've added language, uh, that Carolyn particularly wanted to have that, and, and also Charlie, he brought it up, uh, as well, to better define the, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Depreciation schedule that they use on their stuff, and that's been changed. Was there anything else, Carolyn?
And we added some dates as far as when reports are being submitted.
Right, dates, uh. The average that they have been over the seventy-five thousand was somewhere a little over a hundred grand, I think, per year for the last five years, wasn't it?
Uh, I think it's like eighty-seven.
Okay, so they've gone to a maximum of a hundred thousand. They, a couple of times, didn't even charge us any more than the seventy-five thousand, so this has been a real good deal. They've got a exemplary service. They're, quite frankly, near as I can tell, the best equipped and trained ambulance people in the entire central Texas region. Uh, so I would encourage you to go ahead and do this. It will be a five-year agreement plus the time between now and October, uh, September thirty, trying to get it in conjunction with the fiscal year instead of the calendar year. Carolyn, did I leave anything else? There you have it.
Okay, so just to catch everybody up, several years ago, volunteer ambulance disbanded, the EMS service that we had, there were a lot of city discussions, big town hall meeting, uh, about what do we do? Corial EMS made themselves available. Uh, of course, it was no longer free to us. Uh, and the city made the decision that, uh, again, this is a service that we would help fund by a portion of our general fund tax dollars, going to support, um, the provision of ambulance service to our citizens. So that's what we do, that's where we are. Um, and so it's not much in the grand scheme of things, and I think, Kevin, it's not so much that we have to pay the hundred thousand, but it can be paid, and we pay the difference, um.
Well, it's, it's not always a hundred thousand. A hundred thousand would be the maximum that it is. It can be less than a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And, and a few times has been less than even the seventy-five thousand. Uh, their original pitch was basically to go a hundred and fifty thousand, and we're like, yeah, your average hasn't been that.
Yeah.
And so they, uh, negotiated with us in very good faith. Uh, the gentleman that, that originally, uh, brought this to us when we took, uh, request for qualifications is no longer with the company, and the people that have stepped in are doing an exceptional job in his stead as far as paperwork goes. So I'm, I'm real pleased with it. And he sure brought back a bad memory from all that back then when we lost the volunteer service and had to go through this. We considered, uh, well, we put out RFQs and we got five or six responses, three of which we went through very carefully, uh, and, uh, received presentations from those companies. It was, uh, a very long and, in my opinion, well-done process. We had, uh, some ex paramedics that were on that group that, that considered it. It was, uh, very interesting to me. I learned a lot, but they came down to these folks, and we haven't looked back since and haven't regretted it.
Yeah, so do we know how many ambulances they're keeping around? One?
If they roll that one, they bring a, a replacement to South Mountain.
Sometimes all the way to the city.
Yeah, sometimes they come in and wait here.
You sit it closer?
Yeah.
If you see one parked outside of the station, that's the backup unit that's come all the way to town if they are transporting a patient. If they're prepped in Gatesville, they'll go to South Mountain and stage, but for the most part, they try to keep a box in the city at all times.
So here's the language I was looking for, y'all, on page seven. What we pay is a subsidy, meaning if, if at the end of the year, their financial statements show that they incurred a loss here in the city of McGregor, then we can, then we must pay up to a hundred thousand dollars to reimburse that loss, but it's possible that if they're able to bill and collect for the pickups they make, then we wouldn't owe anything as a city. So again, we're on the hook up to a hundred thousand, uh, to subsidize any losses that they are incurring because they are doing business with us, so.
And they have a very aggressive and successful collection process.
Yeah. So it's been good for us, and hopefully, it's been good for our citizens, so.
How, um, how many calls do we normally, within a year, do we use the ambulance service?
Do I know roughly?
It's on that, it's on the report last quarter.
Yeah, it was in here.
Well, I, I, I can't call it off off the top of my head. I should, I should have thought about that, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I was, I'm, I can look back at that, but yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, I think so too.
Uh, they're, they're pretty busy.
Yeah, it's a pretty shocking amount.
Was the question, how many calls?
Yeah.
A year.
How many runs?
Uh, they average ninety to a hundred and twenty a month.
Ooh, that's a lot.
It's about three to four a day. So they're on the same frequency that the fire department is, so anytime they're paged out, I typically hear it because we're on backup for lift assist or CPR, that sort of thing. So they're averaging three to four a day.
Is that our nursing home, maybe?
Um. Westview Manor is, is some of their calls, but the majority of their calls are to regular citizens.
Also with the urgent care center now, I've seen it there three times already. They, the people will go there and they'll, of course, call the ambulance and transport you. That's kind of a neat deal, to be honest, for a whole lot of reasons.
You know, on the second page on, where it says servicing rate, uh, in the year of past, in the few years back, we had a little problem, but assuming that it was played now, but the, the one down here, C, is where it say, uh, limited emergency transportation, and then it say, may, may be made by the unit supervisor they send to other medical facility depending on level of trauma and, and caliber. So, um, my question is, what is the, oh, where is, how, the range for, within the range for them taking you once they pick you up?
They, you know, the protocol and where they go when?
Depending upon the level of trauma, um, obviously, if it's a child, um, McLean's Children in Temple is gonna be more the pediatric trauma. Um, it's the closest pediatric, but for the most part, most of their runs are to Hillcrest or Providence for citizens here. It depends on, in their coverage area. If we have a car accident that's south of town and the run to Temple is quicker, they'll make that to Baylor Scott and White. Or if it involves a child, they'll go to McLean's depending upon what the level of trauma is.
Okay, per se, what about for, uh, them picking up someone and saying, being taken to, for instance, say the VA hospital?
They typically, because they're emergency services, um, Hillcrest is the primary emergency for the city of Waco. And to my knowledge, the VA would only be kind of as a backup request type deal. Typically, if the ambulance is involved, it's a, in its emergency situation, um, Baylor Scott and White, Hillcrest, or Providence, depending upon the situation. I believe Providence has a larger cardiac wing than Scott and White does. But I don't believe, Andrew, that they go to the VA as an option.
Because I mean, why I ask that? Because, uh, like I said, this is, hadn't happened in the past. We, I don't know if they got it straight or, or talked about it and got it. Because what, what, what happened with that is, uh, I understand about the trauma, something, they picked me up and, you know, it was my heart and stuff, that, that, I understand going to, going to probably. But if a veteran per se is in all this treatment stuff, they have to VA, then, you know, as a veteran, if you take him anywhere else and he's not a hundred percent self-connected or whatever, this, uh, you know, he going, I mean, if he is, he gonna incur that for that bill where if he's a veteran and you take him to VA, and the VA will take a veteran here, especially if he's, if he's a hundred percent self-connected, or even if he's not even a hundred percent, but if he's self-connected. So if not, you, them doing that's what I'm wondering about, because they would be incurring a payment, uh, uh, on that individual. You know, because at one time I was, it, it just happened, and I even asked him and told me that they want to go to Temple VA, and they wouldn't take me, and I might have, like, I told them, and the second time, they, they, they didn't because I incurred a three thousand dollar bill, and I would tell them, I said, because I was conscious enough to understand, you know, to say that, and I told them, well, if y'all take me, then you're gonna be paying that three thousand dollar bill. So I don't, I mean, that's not, I don't have that problem anymore. But see, I'm saying, that's what I'm wondering about, because all it was to me seemed like, that they didn't wanna, just didn't want to drive to Temple, so that's what I hope we don't get into, you know, and I'm, I, I understand that part about like the children hospital, and I understand about the trauma, because most of them, you know, kind of trauma, they gonna take you to, to, to Providence, because that's the nearest hospital. So I wonder what was the criteria for that?
I don't know if, yeah, I don't know if that's specifically written into this contract that you all are addressing tonight, but it may be part of their SOPs, and that's a discussion we can certainly enter into conversations with Chief Lay, who's the chief of Corial's EMS service. Because I, I'm a veteran too, Andrew, so I completely get what you're saying. If, if you request, hey, look, I, this is where my care physician is, they have all of my medical records, all of that. I, I would agree with you a hundred percent that if you ask to go to a VA center and you are a veteran, that you should be transported there. I don't know if that's in that contract.
Remember that?
Man, that's been a while back.
Well, that's what I was saying, but I'm just, I wanted to be sure that, that really got you figured out.
Let us ask about that follow-up. Jeff James was the, not Jeff James?
Uh, we had the supervisor.
Jeff. Menzie.
Had a meeting with.
The previous chief?
Yeah, Jeff.
Jeff Menzie.
Yeah, Jeff Mitzi was the one we worked with. He's gone, but let me, let me revisit that and, and see if we can get some assurance on that.
Because, you know, to me, if they are actual protocol, and I, I can well understand that within, within the jocks, but that's the idea of them, that it's easy for them to take me over to Waco, take a, a veteran to Waco, because that Waco, you know, you can't, ain't no going to the Waco VA, that's not a treated facility. It's Temple VA, is where most veterans go to, you know.
And they, they do travel to Temple?
Yeah.
You know?
I just wanted to mention that. I mean, like I said, it hadn't happened, and I know, I know it happened to me, but.
I don't know if that's in that specifically.
I would just like to be for sure on that. That's all I would, it hadn't happened. I'm not saying it happened, but it did happen, but that'd been some years ago. And since we have a new contract, I just wanted, you know, there's some that I was concerned about. Appreciate it.
Okay, um, any other questions or comments about item five? Do we have a motion on the table yet? No? All right, is there a motion to approve the contract with the caveat that Kevin will be following up about, uh, the veteran service? Second. There's a motion of second on item five. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. We're gonna back up to, uh, item four. I see Jacob's here with us, so Jacob, you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, so then we'll call item four, which is discussion possible action regarding approval of resolution R dash five dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution of the city of McGregor, approving an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation to allow the city of McGregor to construct shoulder improvements along westbound FM twenty-six seventy-one and Motherhead Parkway to provide for safer traffic movements at the intersection of FM twenty-six seventy-one and Judith Road in the city of McGregor, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement for a, uh, local on-system improvement project. You're up.
Attorney Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm on the other side of the document, that, these people also. But this document is just, as, as the mayor said, it's just an agreement with the Texas Department. As you know, we did the improvements for Judith Road from the first, according to Motherhead Parkway up to, can also property line. Uh, and so this is just an agreement. And so, this is just an agreement between the city and Texas, stating that y'all are aware that. It will be responsible for the construction costs of the improvements, and then once it's constructed to Texas standards, that will be. Basically donated back to Texas, they will own and maintain it. So, other than the construction costs, there's no additional costs that will be incurred by the city, all the administrative costs from Texas, they're gonna handle themselves. So, no additional cost for y'all, other than, other than the construction costs for the improvements. And those improvements will be done as part of the second big, big package that we'll put out, um, for the actual paving of Judith Road.
Oh boy.
Correct.
So, when it talks about, uh. Shoulder improvements along twenty-six seventy-one, Motherhead Parkway, what are we talking about, is it gonna be widened some?
It will, and so it will just be widened on the north side, on the City of McGregor industrial park side. Again, just allowing for, um, larger trucks to make a safe turn movement, to take me a right onto Judith Road to service the industrial park. And allowing, you know, if there's anybody that's continuing through that intersection, just to maneuver around those larger trucks safely.
Okay.
Queuing lane.
All right, um, it seems pretty straightforward, anybody have any questions about, uh, item four, if not, we can. Teed up by resolutions.
Um, I do not, but I can provide you an exhibit.
That's all right. I mean, I have, have it in my mind. So it's a shoulder, we're not turning it into three lane, not turning it into.
Yeah, the existing facility doesn't have a shoulder, it's just, I think it's two twelve foot lanes, and so we're just providing a shoulder for that section.
Did we get the exhibit?
Correct, yes, so we're making a right turn off of.
Is there a motion on item four by resolution name?
I moved that we approve resolution R dash five dash two zero two three.
This is motion is second on item four, are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. Item six, we're about to roll through a whole bunch of public hearings. And various applications, so everybody just kinda hang on here, item six. Hold a public hearing regarding zoning variance for construction of single family home at two oh one South Madison Avenue.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Have a lot of planning and zoning tonight, uh, this one, I don't think was on your sheet, if you got one, that's a different thing, that planning and zoning recommended, but. This is right on the corner over here, it is zone neighborhood commercial. They have a fifty by a one twenty lot, and they're requesting a slight variance of. Five percent overage on the size of the, of the home, our neighborhood commercial is twenty-five percent of the lot. And then requesting, uh, R six, uh, residential, single family setbacks. The, uh, neighborhood commercial setbacks versus the neighborhood commercial setbacks, and then a ten foot variance on the street side. Which would be in line with, uh, the house that is directly behind it and then the. On the other side of the street here.
Yeah, I was gonna say, give me your, help us with our bearings here.
One more? But we're like, this is the, the food pantry. That's actually an old.
Oh yeah, yeah, it has that little pad on it right there.
This is the, kind of a strip center.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where Freedom Reigns counseling is and all that, so.
So we're right over here.
Corner. Right, it's, it's right over there in the corner. Uh, just the food pantry right here.
Okay, so they wanna put a single family residence right there.
There is, uh, two lots actually, so this is two oh one and two oh seven, so we're talking about two oh one right now, but they do wanna put. A single family home on there.
Wait, 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 they put one on there or two on there, cause that's awfully small to be putting two on there.
That's, uh. Fifty by one forty lot, so it would suffice for R six zoning.
To do. So they wanna put two houses?
No, no, this is, this is one lot, two oh one.
Right.
This is two oh seven.
Right, so we're gonna, they wanna.
Mm-hmm, that's correct. I'm sorry, I thought you meant they wanna put two houses on there.
No, 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 they're gonna put a house on each lot, and that's still big enough to do?
Yes, with the R six zoning. Slight variance on the street side there, because they do have a fifteen foot side setback, but the house size that they've chosen. Is it the kind of footprint of the home? That they've chosen to build, and then if that's essentially the layout that they've gone with, would meet all the other requirements. So the red line is where the setback should be, and they're requesting to be able to build where the black line is, which would be in line with this house here. And the food pantry across the street.
Okay. Uh, anything else we need to know before we open the public hearing?
Yes, sir, um, this particular lot does have this concrete slab up here. Not sure if there are underground tanks, used to be a, a filling station there. Planning and zoning did approve, recommend approving it with the contingency that before they're allowed to do any thing on the site, that they prove to the city that there are no tanks or there can be tanks if they need to.
Who applied for this, local or not?
Local, yes.
Did we have the application? Should be right here.
Dylan Klisch.
Dylan Klisch.
I don't know the exact relationship, he is related to one of our.
Okay, um, what else, Brian, on this one? All right, so seven twelve, the public hearing is open regarding the zoning variance, which is to move one of the setback lines, how many feet?
Uh, five foot, to allow them ten, ten feet on the side instead of fifteen.
How wide is that right away on second?
Uh, it's a pretty wide one, um, I'm sure they have exact footage, but, um, they do have a nice clean line of side, even with that, that build there.
Line of sides is a main, main issue.
And they, they did express wanting to build a fence, but they can't build it any further forward from here, so essentially it would be. Right here would be the home site, they can build a fence.
All right, uh, public hearing is open, anybody gonna comment on this item? Okay, item six, that public hearing is closed. So that takes us to, uh, seven, which is an action item. Discussion of possible action regarding zoning variance for constructing, construction of single family home at two oh one. South Madison, so we're gonna pick up two oh one and two oh seven as separate items. Is there a motion on item seven?
I make a motion to approve zoning variance, construction of single family home at two oh one South Madison Avenue.
Second. This motion is second on item seven, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries to item eight. This is related, hold a public hearing regarding zoning variance for construction of single family residence at two oh seven South Madison.
Same floor plan on this one, if it is an interior lot, so they don't have the, the issue of the side yard. They did ask, um, or I, I did recommend that when they built these two structures, because they're using the same floor plan, and I thought per state. That they would put the driveway for the corner house right here, and the driveway for the interior house here, so that they're not, the driveway is on the corner. That was the only recommendation I had on the second house.
And were they agreeable?
I wrote something in my motion to make sure that they. Didn't have any of them tanks.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we need to back that up.
Yeah, I was like, I, I wrote in there in my motion.
Yeah, let's do that, before we move, so let's amend. Item seven. So, Renee, did you make the motion? Okay, so go ahead and amend that motion by restating the whole thing.
I make a motion to approve the zoning variance for construction of single family home at two oh one South Madison Avenue. But also with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission that says that they need to make sure there are no. Tanks in that, under that concrete or within that area.
Yeah, okay, so now there's a motion is second under amended item seven. Now, any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Now to item eight. And that public hearing is open at seven sixteen. Anybody on the public hearing for item eight? And I don't guess the concrete affects.
It's not, not that, that lot.
Anybody, public hearing is open. Yes, sir, you wanna speak?
I'm gonna wait till you get to, I'm gonna wait till you get to me.
Okay, all right.
I'm gonna get, get next to me.
Okay, so, uh, the public hearing is closed. Under item eight, that takes us to nine. Which is discussion of possible action regarding zoning variance for construction of single family home at two oh seven South Madison Avenue, is there a motion?
And your recommendation on this one was that they.
They put the, the driveways together in the interior of the block, so that there's not a driveway on the corner, and then there's not a driveway next to that. Commercial building that's over there farther away.
Look at you, Angela, I love it. Well, I make a motion then to. Uh, approve zoning variance for construction of single family home at two oh seven South Madison Avenue. But also allowing thirty percent of the building coverage on lot, and that the driveway. Of two oh one and two oh seven be placed next to each other, away from the intersection and building next door.
That cover, everybody? Okay. There's a motion is second then on item nine. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. To ten. Is, um, to hold a public hearing regarding zoning variance for construction of single family home at three oh four Hayes Street.
This property is owned by Adela Construction, um, I've spoken to Bert about it, they have tried to acquire. This part, uh, piece of property right here, and the person does not want to sell. This person is, um, satisfied, but I think they own two or three lots, and then this person down here has a couple, so. It is a smaller lot in Old Town, Redder, uh, they do wanna build a single family home on there, and they have found. A floor plan that fits requirement, uh, planning and zoning recommended approval of, uh, allowing the variance on the lot width. Because it is an older lot and they're. The size that it is. They do have a floor plan that will fit, and we all have acquired.
Wow.
Yeah, I know, I mean, should we be concerned at all with these floor plans that are about as wide as a pencil? Uh, no, it just.
Run exactly a lot of that, where it's three oh.
Three oh four Hayes.
I mean, it sure seems like we are, uh, just turning a mobile home sideways and sliding it in there, and I know that's not what it is, but golly.
Yeah, sure, she asked, what is this square, what would this square footage of that be, it's a.
Um, it's gotta be a minimum of a thousand square foot, I, I don't know what that specific one is, off the top of my head. That's not that, floor plan is just a mockup, it's not the finished. They are gonna add either a door right here and a door right there for fire, but I don't know the square footage of, of that off the top of my head.
There's, there's no garage, I mean, this is just, I don't know, I, I. Look, I know. I guess P and Z, yeah, approved, but we still have final say, Andrew, what, what do you think, this is, you're a ward, I'm not crazy about this kind of stuff though.
You know, with that and the way they, you know, a lot of that. He's thinking that. You know, Mr. Ward was speaking, but, you know, he was talking about another item, that's a different one, would it?
Yeah.
No, Jeff, he got his hand up.
It's different.
It's different.
Yeah, I got the same problem, I, I, I like the one on, on Pulling Street.
But we don't get to that one, would it?
They are talking about splitting the lot up, they're talking about splitting the lot up and putting two mobile homes on there, and, 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 I, I, I can't understand that.
Yeah, well, it, it wouldn't be mobile homes, because none of that's even zoned, so.
It's supposed to be for family, it's supposed to be for family owned homes, and, 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 uh. I can't understand it.
Yeah, so, sir, hang on, sir, we're gonna get to that one in just a minute, we'll get, we'll get to you.
Yeah, that's not that one, would it, that's, this is on Hayes, that's for a house, the one you're doing, yeah, yeah, he's thinking that one.
Yeah, now I got you.
No, what I was saying. Yeah, well, what I was saying, what you're looking at is, is, uh, a lot of, remember what they kinda called, uh, a little like in the big world with the, uh. Shotgun house.
Shotgun house.
Yeah, that's basically count over here.
What's the zoning on this one?
That's R six.
I don't even see.
This is R six? What are they requesting?
Uh, they're, well, because of the lot width here, it's only thirty foot, need a fifty foot front end.
When that front of the house is just about wide enough to put a door.
So the lot does not meet the standard width, but it does have six thousand square feet?
No, they're asking for a zoning variance to put the house there, the, the fifty by one twenty won't get you the.
Is there, is the land available next door?
No, that's their, that's their issue, is that this person. Quite a lot of them, and this person, uh, is not responsive to any requests to sell, and this person over here has. Several pieces already, so this would be their only option to try to acquire this, otherwise.
You know, I'd say, I'd say go try to acquire it, or I'd rather that look vacant than shove something to talk about there, that's just. And again, please convey our concerns to the P and Z, this just doesn't cut it.
You know, one of the thing I, question I had in, uh, knows. And how, you know, what the process is on the planning and zoning board, but I was, I wondered a lot of times that. When they're making their decision, and what's being presented to them, do they actually go and see the. What they're making a.
They see everything you see, y'all get, y'all get essentially, per item, information.
He goes and looks usually all to.
No.
That's what I was saying, I was saying, uh.
Oh, put eyes on it?
Yeah, cause, you know, it was kinda like the same thing with the. Yeah, 'cause, you know, it was kind of like the same thing with the property over there on, uh, Cleveland where they were talking about putting those duplexes. They went over there and look, you saw that that trench and all that is in there, a lot of things. So I was, I was just wondering, I don't know what the criteria is, how they go by the, when somebody's decision being made. I'm not questioning, I'm just wondering, 'cause if you look and see something, you can.
Get a better feel for what's in it.
Get a better feel for what you're talking about, you know, putting there, approving to put there.
Well, let's do this. Let's open the public hearing. So under item ten, the public hearing is open about the zoning variance at three oh four Hayes Street. Anybody from the public? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. That takes it to item eleven. Counselors, are any support for this? If there is, you can make a motion. Hearing no motion, am I correct that, uh, this item is just gonna die for lack of motion? It appears that way, so, uh, there will be no approval under item eleven for lack of a motion. Item twelve is to hold, hold a public hearing regarding minor replat for one oh three Pullen Street.
This, uh, property is on the R six. Uh, it is a hundred by one fifty currently and the property owner would like to split it. There is no structure there. The city demolished it a couple years ago. But they would like to split it lengthwise. They're essentially making two fifty by one fifty lots that have water and sewer right out front. And it would be the same, uh, floor plan as this house that's built on Hayes.
What is that, a two-bedroom, three-bedroom? Do we know?
Uh, I had the rest of the document, but I just have the picture. I don't, uh, I don't know.
So again, I mean, there's a picture of a house, looks better, but I, I'm just telling you, man, I'm a little concerned about taking a, a lot. And the only thing that s- some of the developers, again, don't know who all they are and it doesn't really matter. Seems like all we get are, let's take a nice sized lot, cut it in two so we can now stick two houses on it and make some more money. I get the idea of, hey, make a buck, but I'm just not sure that's good for the long-term, long-term of the city. Yes, sir. Uh, well, hang on, hang on. We'll let the council, then we'll open that public hearing in just a second. So what is it zoned over there now? Is it R six?
That one's actually, uh, M H, manufactured home.
So are they gonna put a mobile home there?
No, they're gonna build the house, same exact floor plan that, that blue house up on Hayes.
So minimum is a thousand feet?
What's that?
Minimum square footage, living space is a thousand feet?
Thousand square feet of living, and they don't have a garage.
Y'all understand the house small, a thousand square feet? That, that, we're talking apartment size.
Oh, yes, a small apartment.
Are those, uh, those two lots both the same lots? You know, talking, owned by the same?
Same owner, uh-huh.
Wasn't it, did they wear, my understanding that for the if they were, which they not, they separated, but if they were gonna build on that lot, you'd have to replat it with.
That's, that's what she's.
They're gonna build it on both lots?
That's what she's asking for a replat. So it is, it is one lot now, so she wants to split it like that.
And each lot would be six thousand square feet or more.
Seventy-five hundred.
See, I thought when you replat.
Kind of what I thought. So it's, it exceeds your minimum lot size and will meet or beat your minimum lot, your minimum house size. So to, to control the things you're talking about, you probably need to go back and revisit your zoning codes to change that up a little bit. Require, require larger homes.
Seventy-five hundred square foot.
Is that right, then?
What's that?
Do you know the square footage of that house?
I have it on.
That's correct.
I'm serious.
Yeah.
Fourteen ninety-one.
Split it, replat it.
Three two.
That's a fourteen hundred and ninety-one square foot house, three-bedroom, two-bath.
Which one?
The one that you're building.
They just sold for three oh seven.
So it's not a thousand square foot house, that's just your minimum.
Okay, well, that's, we just need to know what it is.
Right, well.
'Cause if you're telling us a thousand square foot, that's far different than.
Okay, your zoning code says your minimums. You really can't dictate more than that. And let, now, you can not give the plat, that's certainly with your, but it still exceeds the area. But zoning is zoning and you got, you know, if you're not happy with the minimums, then we need to revisit that and change minimums. But in this case, you're talking about over fourteen hundred square feet.
Yeah, that's why I was just wondering, I mean, this house, like, if we knew that square footage, just... 'Cause, I mean, they've built quite a few of those houses that look like the one on Pullen, right? I feel like I've seen, yeah.
I, I don't know if that plan's been used before, but I, I do know that that particular developer has built a few houses in the community. I don't know the exact address.
And they're single-family houses, not duplexes.
Yeah, she's building single-family homes and, and she says she already has someone interested in this, so.
So, alright, back from the top. If we split this lot, how big are each of the lots?
Seventy-five hundred square foot.
Okay, and that is within R six zoning?
Six thousand.
Correct?
In fact, they'd be regular lots and you're R seven five.
Okay, and do we have any, 'cause, do we have any idea how big the houses will be? That's not part of the application.
None. I, that's the next, one of the next items addressed the house, I, this is just for the very, very, uh, flat.
Yeah, but to know concerns whether we want to.
She needs to, she needs basically, with that house plan that she showed me, the dimensions that she provided to me, she needs a one-footed variance for the, non-stated.
Kevin, what do, what do you think?
I think that this falls exactly in line with what you said in the other, whenever you did not, when you discontinued the duplex by, uh, specific permits for the specific use. It's a single-family home, it's fourteen hundred square feet. Yours, the only reason they have to replat the lot, the lot, is it R seven five? It's R seven two, right?
It is.
The other zoning is R six, R seven two, and R ten? Okay, so it actually, the lot size exceeds the next zoning classification up. And the house side exceeds your minimum by four hundred feet. However, they're also gonna need a zoning, uh, variance for one foot. This is very illustrative of what you basically said you wanted when you said stop doing the duplex. You, you, in zoning, you need to be very careful. Now, you've got all kinds of ways to deny this thing if you want to. But the spirit of the zone is being exceeded. And so you kind of gotta be careful how much you try to dictate, minimum house size and some of that stuff beyond what's in your zoning code. And again, I would encourage you to go look at the zoning code and if a thousand square feet is too small, you can bump it up. But you gotta be careful about that because, you know, twelve hundred feet's a pretty good size, common house for beginning now. And, I mean, that house sold for three hundred and what?
Three hundred and seven thousand.
Which one did?
That one.
The blue one in the picture? Was that one of your houses?
I'm Hayes. No, I don't have a dog in this place. I'm just, isn't, that's just the information. Yeah, it, it sold for three oh seven. It's a nice house. It's exactly what the council originally would want.
Well, I mean, fourteen hundred.
Okay, so let's make sure, though, we're talking about what the differences are. We just denied the previous one because... I mean, the lot size was a lot different.
It's thirty-six hundred square foot lot.
Okay, thirty-six hundred square foot lot composed, compared to one that's twice that big.
Yeah, that one was too small.
Problem in my mind with the one you just, you know, when you start talking about it's too skinny, that starts worrying me. But that really wasn't the problem. Problem is it's a thirty-foot width and you don't allow for thirty-foot widths anymore. And yes, that's a problem, but it's a problem that can either be fixed or can wait. When you start building on thirty-foot lots, you're gonna have some fun unless it's a triplex or a duplex or something.
Okay, so let's do this.
You're trying to get people to use old land that was platted out differently.
Fifty about, a hundred and twenty, fifty wide, a hundred and twenty deep. So what size house could you put on that? Fifty wide and a hundred and twenty deep?
Six sides?
I mean, there's a range of.
Five-foot side, the interior lot, put five foot on the side of the house.
On, on each side of.
So.
It was presented.
You're talking about forty, forty foot, twenty.
Yeah, you built a forty-foot white house.
Yeah, forty foot.
The challenge comes when you put a garage on the front of that. And one of the things you want to encourage in the future is a garage. And if our R six zone doesn't require garages for single-family houses, that's another reason to revisit the code. And I can take you to some fairly recent examples of that. Where a local builder who's done a great job and has changed his opinion built three houses right in a row and decided not to take our, uh, infill ordinance offer and built three of them without garages. And they looked like they were built in the forties.
Man, they just, just build one on, on golf field without a garage.
So there are some things we can look to our zoning code and see what we can change. I don't have a bad problem doing that.
Alright, twelve appears to be different. Public hearing's open at seven thirty-six under item twelve, which is a minor replat for one oh three Pullen Street.
Another thing is if they're gonna build, stick-built house rather than mobile homes and mobile homes, that's probably something you want to.
That, that is a, that is a benefit here, is this is zoned for mobile homes, meaning you'd get a, on this one, you'd get a house as opposed to a mobile home, which could be put there. So. Anybody on the public hearing on item twelve?
Yes, sir, you can watch the microphone if you'd like to speak.
I think he's a little confused, though, Andrew. I think he's still wanting fourteen.
You know, he, he already said what I would say, 'cause, uh, it, 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 to put, to put the lot of, of, of the, divide, divide it up and, and put two, two, two mobile homes down, don't make no sense to me. And, and you just, uh, it ain't for, it ain't for people buying a home. It's for you gaining money to, 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 uh, put the homes there, you know, it, it, it don't make no sense. That's what, uh...
Yeah, that's a house, yeah. Yeah, so, sir, just one clarification, though. This, that's one of the things we were talking about, is this would not be a mobile home. This would be a...
What I'm, what I'm saying is they're talking about splitting up the lot to put the, put a home here and a home there, you know? It, it's gonna be rental and not gonna be for single families to, to own a home. That's what I'm saying.
Well, could be. You never know. I mean, there's one, there's.
The way they, the, the way they're representing it, it's for them to gain money, you know what I'm saying?
The one that was interested, do you know if they were interested in buying the home or?
Yeah, she, she has someone that's interested in purchasing the home, that's, she's.
So it would be a homeowner.
Because of interest rates.
Yeah, that's true.
Anybody else under the public hearing? Okay, public hearing is closed. Let's go to item twelve, uh, which is discussion of possible action regarding the minor replat for one oh three Pullen. And again, there'll be another item connected with it, which is fourteen and...
Item thirteen is replat.
Yep, thirteen, we're gonna go to fourteen and fifteen even under this one. So all kind of roll together here. Item thirteen, discussion of possible action regarding minor replat for one oh three Pullen Street. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minor replat for one oh three.
So motion is second on item thirteen, hear the questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries to item fourteen, hold a public hearing regarding zoning variance for construction of single-family home at one oh three Pullen Street. Okay, Brian?
She needs six inches on either side of the house for that, for that floor plan. Based on the replat.
Yeah. Yeah. And again, I think what interests me the most about this is getting a house and a lot that's capable as opposed to a, a mobile home that it's zoned for. Yeah. Uh, anyway, let's see. Public hearing is open under item fourteen at seven forty. Public hearing's closed under item fourteen. That's item fifteen now, discussion of possible actions regarding zoning variance for construction of single-family home at one oh three Pullen Street. We're talking six inches, Brian, on either side. Is that right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Alright, is there a motion under item fifteen?
I can make a motion, I do have to save the six inches for now.
No.
Okay.
No.
Well, I make a motion, um, to approve the zoning variance for construction of single-family home at one oh three Pullen Street.
There is a motion to second under item fifteen relating to the zoning variance. Any other questions?
Yeah, they will, in saying there's those gonna be homes built.
That's in the motion. That's absolutely part of it. That is absolutely part of it.
As a mobile home, you wouldn't be required to have a variance for the width.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries to item sixteen is to hold a public hearing regarding application for short-term rental at four oh two Spring Street.
This one is zoned medium density. They're gonna be part-time residents, so, uh, they'll live here part of the year and then they'll, off the, uh, schedule, uh, location, uh...
So when we say short-term rental, it's the same thing as an Airbnb.
That's correct.
So when that person then, Airbnb's this one, he's knocking out, he or she is knocking out everybody else than five hundred feet?
Uh, that's correct.
Does the world know that? Because that's kind of a big deal.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's another one that's coming up in a minute.
So it's essentially first come?
First, first, uh, first.
Does everybody understand that?
Date, date of application is what, uh, Planning and Zoning has said, the, 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 all the other, the words.
So we all know where the, where Spring is, and that's the one right there on the corner.
Right next to the church, right?
Uh-huh. That's right.
And if we grant one, then we've just knocked out everything inside that yellow circle, correct?
That's it.
So I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that there's one operating illegally within that yellow circle.
We have one that was previously approved as a short-term rental. My understanding is it went longer than thirty days and it lost its short-term rental status, but it continues to operate. That's on Google Maps. Has the Mac now, uh, something like that.
So what are we gonna do about this? It's gonna be a problem. You know, are we now in the, in the state of now policing everybody's homes?
I'm telling you, uh, this is becoming an issue statewide. Many cities are looking at it, doing many different things to try to deal with it. Everything from collecting hotel motel tax to just dealing with this exact scenario. I'm not too sure you shouldn't just stop doing it until you figure out how you're gonna do it.
That really might be the best, even this feels weird when we got someone right behind it that's asking for the same thing. And because someone beat them to the punch by, it could have been thirty seconds or thirty days, but either way, you're just like, yeah, we'll do you, but not you. That just, I don't know.
I can go into that one if you want.
Yeah, let's, let's look at it at the same time.
So the home that is right... So the home that is right here had contact with city staff uh, last year. And through some people coming and going, uh, changing the hands, it was not conveyed that that was the intention of their remodels to turn that into a short term rental. So it wasn't until this home received the notification that this one, because they're two hundred foot apart, that it kind of sounded the alarm. I should get my application in.
But they were late.
They were after.
So a question. Does the extended central business district cover the house that's on the other side of the old white house? Is that an attorney's office?
Yes, that's, yeah, this is, this is uh, medium density. That is a CBD one.
The, the White House is in CBD one or two?
In one.
So what does that mean though, Kevin?
I think we're gonna have to look at it. Uh, they may have the ability to do it by right.
Because they're in CBD?
Yeah, they're already a commercial venture. I mean, you're kind of looking at that with the Magnolia House. We never dealt with it because that was before our ordinance. But they're also in a neighborhood commercial. And so they didn't have to go through any kind of reason to do what they did.
You know, I, I think it's wise to put a hold on this, but we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to have some sort of plan. We just can't sit on forever if we're gonna hold. I mean, what? Do you see any, is there any place to park at that old white house?
Uh, not really, but for that, for central business, you have to have parking.
Oh, really?
Now, they do have a driveway.
Side of it.
Side of the driveway.
So that's a part of the same parking for short term rental.
The rest of the house on the corner like that.
I would suggest that we table these. I would suggest we table these, do a quick uh, review and either come back and do a moratorium on the next meeting in April, yeah, April tenth I believe, or proceed. And, and look at it a little more carefully after, if, if you don't proceed.
Yeah, so Kevin, what would be your thought process? What would you even go to look? Or what would you even start doing to try to figure out a solution?
I'm gonna look at some other cities. I know College Station has just dealt with this, and they're a college town, so that makes it a little different. Lubbock did several years ago, but it was college issues more than anything else. Here, you have a situation where you don't have a, a local hotel and you've got some new housing and it, and it allows people to renovate old housing. And we've had some of that. You've got some really good ones here. Problem is to police it correctly and make people do it right. You literally gotta have somebody that's looking at this a couple of times a month just to see who's out there trying to rent. And then you have to have an enforcement mechanism. I'm not even sure what Charlie's gonna tell us to do on that, but maybe just have to get an injunction.
You know, and then it goes back to the basic premise that we've talked about is that when most people, when you move into a single family residential neighborhood, you expect that you have permanent neighbors, not someone rolling in and out every other weekend.
I've had, I have a good friend that I've had this conversation with now for over a year. And his approach is if I'm gonna buy an old house and that's the market for it, why do you care? And you know, there's a lot to that, but at the same time, what we care is the expectation of what you live in the neighborhood. You know your neighbors. And, and you know, Waco went through this with a couple of high profile cases with Magnolia quite a while ago. They turned them down.
So is that where they are right now? I mean, are they?
They got, they got sued over one of them, and I know Lacy Lakeview got sued over one of them, and I think they, the cities both won.
They did. Lacy Lakeview, I know.
So there you go.
I don't think Woodway doesn't allow any.
They don't?
You may wanna get there. I think it'll be us. Item twenty-six is the moratorium. It's already on there for tonight.
It is? Well, let's just get there. Uh, that seems to be the.
I forgot that we had it on there. My apologies.
That, that just seems to be the one. Yes, Cassie.
I was the staff member they spoke to before I went on maternity leave, so I would be remiss if I didn't at least explain to you what happened.
For, for which one?
Uh, seven hundred South Main. It's the White House in the corner.
Okay, which, which is not this one, but?
The next item.
The next, yeah. So go ahead.
So they uh, called and contacted me in September of last year about buying the house from the previous owner and turning it into an Airbnb. They then contacted the city about the driveway on the side because it was put in illegally and they're trying to figure out how to work it out with text dot as well as the garage because it's over the right away for the city. Um, so they had worked out those things with the city in addition to building, getting a building permit to do all the renovations properly because the previous owner did not. And then it wasn't until, because they're not completed, their renovations aren't completed yet. They were gonna fin, fill out their application once they finished their renovations to make sure everything was where it needed to be according to our code. So I left on maternity leave in November and then they called me on leave um, when they got the notice in the mail.
Okay, well, and again, Kevin raises the best point, and that is if they're in the CBD, boy, that may just kick it out.
I think it does, and, and I'll have to research that as well. That's why I asked you to table it rather than come.
And you're talking about the garage. Everybody see the garage that's behind there? That's, that's connected to it. And that sits in the city's right away?
Uh, the garage does, the side part, there's like two foot on the garage that sits in the city's right away in the alley at the back. And then um, two owners ago, someone put in the driveway, it sits in text dot right of way, but after them working it out with text dot, text dot said it's far enough setback that they're fine with them keeping the entire driveway. Um, but the homeowners were also into, if they needed to put in a rear entrance from the alleyway in the back, they were happy to do it if that's what the city requested. That, at the time, because text out was happy the city did not.
Why don't you buy this when you have a chance?
Too much work.
I would say also.
You had that one coming. I'm just saying.
To add to what Kathy did say, the gentleman did express that um, behind the house, there's a spot next to the garage that he would put paid parking in. He's um, interested in doing the sidewalk, just like what we have here, and so it would make.
Yeah, that'd be nice. At least that one makes more sense to be short term rental, but boy, the house is on Spring, man. That just, that just bothers me.
I'd say table this one and probably deny the other one, but just table them both, but the moratorium will kill the other one for sure.
Kills them all, right?
Short term. Moratorium is just a short term.
Yeah, but I mean, for, for the moment, it kills all of them.
Doesn't kill this one if they have it right.
Right.
And I'll check.
But you'll have to figure that out.
I gotta talk to Charlie. I'm pretty sure it does.
So y'all understand what Kevin's saying. We don't do anything with fourteen or seven, no, excuse me. We don't do anything with sixteen or seventeen. When we get to eighteen and nineteen and twenty though, we would table those because that's a potentially a different issue, correct?
Yeah, I'd ta, I'd table all short term rentals until we figure it out.
And what are we gonna do with the moratorium though?
Uh, please pass the moratorium.
Pass it as in pass it?
Please approve the moratorium.
Okay. Okay, so the recommendation is, is to, we use the word skip. Item sixteen, sev, well, that's what I'm saying, because there's a big difference between tabling, which means we're gonna bring them up again the next meeting, versus moratorium, which gives you more time than just one meeting to discuss it.
Good point.
So back to, back to staff, what do you want to do, Kevin?
Go directly to the moratorium and pass it then.
Okay.
That solves all your questions.
Okay, so they.
I saw you back there.
So that gives you the time to do what we need to, or at least, okay, all right. Everybody follow that?
And so all of these, even, even though they've turned in applications, they would just be placed on hold?
Placed on hold, that's correct. Until we can figure out how better we're gonna handle that.
But they could be, they could come back possibly.
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, wait, wait.
Twenty's withdrawn by the person?
She emailed us.
Oh, I was confusing South Main with South Harrison.
Okay, so twenty and twenty-one are withdrawn by um, by whatever.
Potential.
Well, let's do this. I'll tell you what. I'm gonna run through the public hearings at least, okay? See if anybody wants to comment. And then we'll run back through. I'm assuming that the rest of them will die for lack of motion. We get to twenty-six, then we can pass the moratorium. Just to make sure we've touched on everything that is on the agenda. So item sixteen, there's a public hearing open for the application for short term rental at four oh two Spring Stee, Spring Street. Item sixteen, public hearing open at seven fifty-four. Anybody from the public? Yes, sir.
Property over there.
Yes, sir.
I understand your concern about.
Yeah.
So I, I'm really not sure how much I can say.
You can say whatever you want, public hearing.
But um, we are, as Brian mentioned, we are a hard time resident, so it's not gonna be a full time.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not gonna be a full time, uh, short term rental. Um, so not much else I can say other than that. Other than the fact that obviously currently, if you do address this and decide to completely change how it's structured, I think then you also need to evaluate for those people that were in the application process, what, how do you properly dispose of those? Uh, because right now there's an application fee.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And if you change the rules after.
After the fee's been paid for sure. Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's a fair statement. All right, so I appreciate your concerns, and I hope you can appreciate our concerns as well about uh, we want to just wanna do the right thing for the greater good, so I'm not sure what that is at the moment.
I think part of your solution also needs to be, regardless of which way you go there, are the ones that are operating for, quote, illegally? That uh, part of your, whatever you come up with, you need to address that as well.
Yeah, you're right. That's not fair.
Well, that's, that's the number one thing we're gonna deal with.
Yeah, that, that's not fair. That's for sure. That's not fair. Okay, anybody else under the public hearing under item sixteen? Yes, sir.
I just have a question from the community standpoint. We turn a McGregor into a motel?
That's part of our concern. You're right.
You know, I mean, I've been here almost seventeen years probably, and it's a very wholesome small community feel. I'm a minister here. And, and to change it to that aspect, I know things been turned down because y'all worried about the criminal aspect. You know, and, and it's looks like kind of the same, I'm just speaking for the community, don't come speak. And it's looks like kind of the same thing if we turn the city into a big motel.
Yeah.
That's just myself.
The original intent of the five hundred foot spacing was exactly to prevent that. But what it creates is an administrative headache. It's just pretty much off the charts if you really think about it.
Yeah.
I mean, no more than we've delved, no more than we've delved into it. We've got at least three operating illegally.
And, and as far as you're saying, Mr. Evans, they're operating illegal. Shouldn't we police that more?
That, that's the point, is, is it's.
Yeah.
How? Close them down?
Then, well, that, that's real easy to say, but it's real hard to do.
Yeah, and it may be hard to prove, to figure out is that person?
It's actually proven, proven the easy part, but. We actually suspect we're gonna have to file essentially a lawsuit to shut that.
Yeah, that may be true. It may be true.
Don't get me started on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public hearing, good comments. Everybody. Okay, so that takes us to item seventeen. Is there any action under item seventeen? Hearing none from the council. That item is passed. Skipped, I should say. Uh, taking no action. To item eighteen, we'll hold a public hearing for the short term rental at seven hundred South Main. Anybody on the public hearing at seven fifty-eight? Nothing else under the public hearing. That one is closed to item nineteen. Discussion of possible action regarding application for short term rental at seven hundred South Main Street. Is there an action, a motion to take action? Hearing no motion. Uh, there'll be no action taking under item nineteen. It's my understanding that item twenty has been pulled.
Yes, sir.
So item twenty and twenty-one have been withdrawn by the request store for the agenda, agenda item. That takes us to item twenty-two, which is to hold a public hearing regarding final plat of Morris Court Town Homes planned use development from Reggager Springs Square LLC. And Mr. Eggers wants to speak on that. And so at this time, I'll tell you what, tell us first, Brian, what's going on. Set the stage for us. What's happening here?
Mr. Eggers, been in contact with city staff for a while on this project. Uh, will be a HUD. Uh, they have to relocate some uh, sewer and water lines, update them, and then Morris Court is technically um, unfinished right away. So we'll have to uh, finish Morris Court uh, through there. And then give a simple background. A little bit of the layout there. You see the, the freshwater and then the wastewater? They'll have to relocate some of the stuff over here, manhole, fish trap can, and then Morris Court will be coming through, come this way, and this is three seventeen down here. So.
And this is one we've seen previously, right?
This is the final for this one. So it's been a little while, a couple of months, but I just think we have some other projects to finish up first, so.
That's the property behind the old Rachel.
Was that, yeah, this, this is uh, this is a large apartment here.
And I said, that's the property where you're talking about behind those houses on uh.
Yeah, this is the, the, a row of houses there.
Where's that half street that goes over? Is it at the top right?
I don't know if I can get it close. I think it is.
We will be re, there's a half a street that goes in between the two houses that they basically used as a private drive for everyone.
Yeah, coming right.
We will be finishing that street out only that portion ourselves. And then I think we've got some cooperative work on the other street as well that's gonna be coming forward.
Okay, so at this time then, the public hearing on item twenty-two is open. Public hearing, Mr. Eggers.
Mayor and council members, so I just uh, showed up to answer any questions that you all might have. This really resembles, uh, as we talked about earlier, it's already been uh, to planning and zoning and also in front of the council on the preliminary stages. This is the actual final version. Took a while because we had to have the engineering done, so uh, engineering's about forty-three thousand dollars to have it engineered. Um, and that takes some time for them to lay everything out. It's been submitted to the city. City made some recommendations as it related to water, sewer, uh, and locations, and also some of the streets themselves. And I believe uh, now it's over to Walker and then they'll do their review and, and kind of finalize everything based on their approval as well. So in, we're kind of in coordination with uh, the city's engineering group. So this particular uh, development will be very similar to what we did down on Windsor Park in that only it'll be townhouses only, but the aesthetics of it will be the same. Block walls for permanent fencing uh, along three seventeen. So very similar to what we see on Main Street. Um, and what we see uh, as you go towards Crawford on the right hand side with the block walls and this small cedar on the top for the backyards. Um, and then we'll do entryways with, you know, erected signage, lit, you know, like we uh, and scrolled, you know, as Morris Court, as, as like a small community development. Uh, it has a gazebo in the center of it, which you see where the green space is. It'll be similar to what we built on Main Street. And then it has a dog park area in the center as well, and that's also a water, a catch area, because it's a pretty flat uh, piece of property. So that's our intent. Um, the units will be floor plan wise, about the same as what we have built in the past. Uh, the two twos seem to work best because it limits the number of vehicles in the parking lot. Um, and what we've seen, especially out in Windsor, is about seventy percent same ownership. We get a few rentals in there as well, but a lot of retirees. I think a cul-de-sac that we have back in there. I think a cul-de-sac that we have back in there is made up of about, you know, eight or ten retirees ladies that either have lost their husbands or, or vice versa, you know? So, it's a, it's a good, it's a good community, you know? And that's about it. Any questions I can answer, I'll be happy to answer for you.
What they be facing, the frontage?
The, the frontage will be facing the new roads that are coming in. The backs will be facing three seventeen, but that, and we'll build that wall across the back. And then on the backside of the other, there's a actual, uh, gas line that runs down through there, and that'll be fenced. Our property doesn't go into that easement, it actually stops right at the, the easement itself. Uh, and then a power will be supplied from the backside all underground.
Why is that easement wide?
Uh, I think it's fifteen feet. It's actually not too wide. Um, well, so our fence lines, we don't go into the easement. The neighbors' fence, fence has fenced over it, so I don't know.
The neighbors', the neighbors' fences are fenced over our easement?
The gas company's easement.
Oh, it is? Okay.
I don't like to create pockets that nobody moves.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
So, that road coming out for three seventeen is where you come in at, or either way, on the regular road or, or that other road that's going to those apartments over there?
Yeah, George, kind of draw or show us where the, where body comes in, or.
Yeah, so, so the access, uh, where is it? How's it work?
In the middle of the lower.
It's not pointing. The middle one, right there? Ah, next one. There we go. Uh, so most of the, most of the traffic will come in off of three seventeen, I'd assume. Uh, this can go out this way, this road will be finished out here, as Kevin was saying. Um, there's actually road already curbed up to here. We'll dig all this up and put the sewer and the water lines in. Uh, and so that, we'll curb, we'll re-curb this all the way around the corner. And then all the interior streets will be, you know, curbed by us as well, and, and we pay for all that. The entryway will have, you know, block wall, entryway signage here and signage here on this side. This will be an exit this way, and then this will be an exit this way. So, it'll have a complete circle, uh, you know, drive going in and out.
You never couldn't give them to sell you that from the south?
What's that?
Land's right across the south.
Uh, I tried to purchase this so we could make it all one community, um, but to date, they haven't decided they wanted to sell that yet, so. I did try though. We wanted to originally put some facing in, kind of like, uh, you know, face-to-face style, but, um, we were unable to get them to commit to that. It's the same owners in the back here of the old apartments that you see in the back that were sold originally. So, when they sold that apartment building, they broke this off and sold that separately. So.
Okay.
This'll also, just, just as a, kind of on the topic of what you were talking about earlier, this'll have a homeowners association, the same or similar to what we've done in the other communities that we've built in that we'll assign, you know, somebody from the city on the HOA, um, you know, a representative that you can assign. I think, and, and this is, again, if you do a moratorium on rentals, you can do that, or on Airbnbs, you can go ahead and do that. I think in the homeowners association, there's a, a limited, uh, there's, there is a clause in there with regard to rental that we can put in there as to six months or something similar. So, uh, and, and exclude short-term rental if that, if that, if that, you know, helps the city.
Yeah, so you would have that or could have that covered by the HOA itself?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, uh, anybody else under the public hearing? Uh, where am I? Item twenty-two. Anything else? Public hearing is still open. Public hearing is now closed at eight oh nine. That takes us to twenty-three, which is discussion of possible action regarding final plat of Morris Court Town Homes Planned Use Development from McGregor Springs Square LLC. Is there a motion on item twenty-three to approve that final plat?
One here says P and Z, uh, recommended approval contingent on final remarks from Walker Partners. Was there anything that y'all had added?
Not currently, no.
Okay.
Probably to be safe, you probably ought to do the same.
Yeah, let's do that.
Uh, well then, I make a motion to approve the final plat of Morris Court at Town Homes Planned Use Development from McGregor Springs Square contingent on final remarks from Walker Partners.
Motion is second on item twenty-three, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries to item twenty-four. Uh, hold a public hearing regarding preliminary plat of a skilled nursing facility off Johnson Drive and Sixth Street.
Does zoning on this was changed to general commercial last month, or did it change? Did have some residents come out and avoid the concern about the lights from vehicles in the neighborhood, so spoken to the project league, said they're going to install a light similar to this that just has the downlight that doesn't shine out beyond the parking area, and that they are, uh, putting in their plat, or, I'm sorry, their final plan for some plants, some kind of vegetation here to mitigate that cars driving around, the, uh, light pollution from vehicles into this neighborhood. They did line their entryway right up, what's that approved? So, it should be very tidy as they're pulling out of that drive, which I think would be elevated a little bit coming out of there. Do you have, uh, water right in front of here and then propose, uh, sewer line in the back from here, so it exists in there?
So, they essentially comply with whatever the requests were, any pushback at all?
No, they're, they're receptive to it, they appreciate people coming out and telling them their concern, and happy to, I think it would be really good news.
Okay, so let's, um, Kevin, any other comments you have on this one, for our public hearing?
Uh, probably after the plants that plan to use.
Yeah.
And, and they, uh, probably, uh, part of their plat going to say that they have to, they.
Yeah.
Uh, they pushed them to put it firm or even a wall.
I was thinking of the wall, not, that we don't have to worry about the plants.
We'll move forward that.
Okay.
He's booked to reach out to me tomorrow so I can express anything they don't want.
When you make your motion, it's, the, don't necessarily dictate the fact that we don't want the last from the parking lot movement. Look, we don't care how, we've got a guarantee of the law. So, we're comfortable about how to get there.
Okay.
I'm always a s, a little skeptical about plant walls, because in this country, in the middle of summer, lots of them.
Nothing lasts.
Or they freeze, and we forget them, and I don't, this is not something these people got.
Go show them the kind of walls George builds out there.
Exactly what I was thinking. We'll, we'll, we'll leave up the method to then, just going with its guarantee.
Okay. Uh, so item twenty-four, public hearing is open under item twenty-four. Hearing nothing from the public under twenty-four, that takes us to twenty-five, which is discussion and possible action regarding preliminary plat of a skilled nursing facility off Johnson Drive and Sixth Street.
Uh, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat of a skilled nursing facility off of Johnson Drive and Sixth Street. But also with concerns for the neighborhood lighting pollution, pollution mitigation.
Second. There's a motion to second under item twenty-five, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. To twenty-six, discussion and possible action on a temporary moratorium on short-term rentals and bed and breakfast until the Planning and Zoning Commission can study and make a recommendation. Exactly as we've discussed, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve a temporary moratorium on short-term rentals and bed and breakfast until the Planning and Zoning Commission can study and make recommendations.
There's a motion to second under item twenty-six. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, no. That motion carries to twenty-seven, discussion and possible actions. Action regarding approval of the notice of general election for wards one, three, and five, which is at large, on May sixth, twenty twenty-three. You just need to call it, yep, you got it.
I make a motion to, to approve the notice of general election for ward one, three, and five at large on May sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Uh, one, two, three, I'm going to vote on this one since Andrew's gone. Uh, any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. Twenty-eight, discussion and possible action regarding approval of the twenty twenty-three contract and election agreement between the City of McGregor and McClennan County Elections Office.
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three contract and election agreement between the City of McGregor and McClennan County Elections Office.
Motion is second on item twenty-eight, any other questions or comments? Yeah, what do we got? Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it is by far the best.
Did they pretty much handle it?
Yep.
Yes, I mean, I started to do the notices, just stuff that's just here, but like the notice and the paper, that's all now split between all of us, and that's had a lot of money to get them doing yourself.
I'm excited for you. For a little while, but now this is, it's wonderful.
Good. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries to twenty-nine, discussion and possible action regarding request from, uh, Karen Delay Holdings LLC to have a penalty and interest waived for twenty twenty-two property taxes for three oh two Laurel Lane, McGregor, Texas.
You have a letter in your packet, it's pretty self-explanatory. Basically waited till the last day to pay taxes and nothing worked because of freezing weather and postal and everything else. That said, I talked to James Linneman today with the school to make sure that they were getting the same request, they are. They're meeting on theirs Thursday night, and, uh, do not know for sure what they're going to do, but, uh, he indicated to me he's going to ask them to delegate that decision to him and let him, uh, work with the, uh, the folks here that wrote the letter. Mr. Judd Griffiths. It's at your pleasure, you can do it according to law. I only worry that it'll kind of create a, not stampede, but kind of a, a thing that happens a little more often than it should. But it's certainly in your hands, if you would like to delegate to me and let me work with James. Uh, at the same time, assuming his board's going to do that, that's fine, that we, he and I could work together to just have one meeting, but it's strictly up to you. Uh, I will, uh, certainly deal with it as you say.
My question, well, I've got two questions. We know much we're talking about?
Do not have any idea. It's one lot, it's one year, it's probably not.
It's just late, right?
Yeah, it's probably not a huge amount.
We're talking about a hundred bucks maybe?
I don't know, could be. It's, uh.
Well, I thought about that, except, can we prove? Everybody going back thinking about the weather, I mean, is that accurate?
That is accurate, and the postal did not run, so the case he is, uh, relaying is correct.
Well, I would like to say that never happens around my household, but it has.
I have no way of knowing if this person, as far as I know, this is the only property they have here in town. They may have tons of property in McClennan County, and it may be a much bigger issue, but I, I have no way to speak to that.
But the motion is to let you look into it and deal with it.
If that's what you prefer. You can, you can deny it, you can agree with it, or you can ask me to look into it, and the, the school and us act together.
Yeah, I think that's the way to go. Yeah. Someone want to make a motion or twenty-nine to that effect?
Uh, I make a motion to have our city manager, uh, look into the request from Cara, what did we say? Cara Delitt, holding, uh, to have penalty and interest waived for the twenty twenty-two property taxes for three oh two Laurel Lane, working with, um, Mr. James as well.
There a second?
I'm second.
There's a motion to second under item twenty-nine. Uh, for Kevin to figure this out and work with the school superintendent to come up with a plan to resolve this issue. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. Thirties to receive the financials as of January thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Carolyn, you're up.
Not a lot of change. We see that the area is up there by year. And with the general fund, was that three point one seven million or fifty four point eight six percent? And our spend, these are four point five six percent, eight nine percent. Our utility fund was one point seven three million, first one point four five million, and expenditures. The exchange is forty point eight thousand. Our eighteen point four three percent, and their expenditures are sixty nine thousand, a thirty one point three four. And our airport was at a hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred, or forty point oh eight, and then thirty six point six thousand, or four point three percent. Our net cash in bank is two point six eight million more than the same period last year. Operating accounts are at fifty eight thousand, full cash is at three million, grants are at fourteen thousand, while capital projects, debt service accounts decreased nineteen times, and four hundred and one thousand respectively. Our general fund net cash flow is twenty thousand less than three this year. Revenue is up six hundred and fifteen thousand, and expenditures are up six hundred and thirty five thousand. The revenue increase is mainly due to higher sales tax, two hundred and twenty four point nine thousand, higher construction permits of three hundred and thirty four, and higher ad warm collections of a hundred and forty seven point three. Expenditure increases include capital outlet of a hundred and twenty five, contracted services are at three hundred and sixty two, and other charges increase of fifty nine point five. And a physician vacancy was filled for an additional forty thousand.
What was that?
Our planner, who was open last year.
Yeah.
Who?
Planner.
Just kidding.
My neighbor.
Office neighbor?
Yes, sir. The exchange net cash flows are down twenty thousand compared to the same period, revenues are up fifty four hundred, and expenses are up twenty five point six, with personnel costs being up, and contracted services are up fifteen point six.
So, stop right there. I know this has been explained before, Cassie, whether it's you or Carolyn, somebody, explain why the net cash flow is down under the exchange even though it's booked all the time?
And so, the time period that this references is things that get booked for six to twelve months from now. It wouldn't be the events that happened in the last three-month period that it's referencing. And then because people book events when they get engaged, or when they're getting married, or having a reunion or whatnot, um, most of our events kind of get booked randomly throughout the year, nothing is like a, we book every January. Actually, every, uh, January, that first week, out right after Christmas, and between Christmas and New Year's is our number one time for cancellations of weddings, when everyone gets to go see the family, so, uh, you kind of have ups and downs. family, so, uh, you kind of have ups and downs. But essentially, it's, there would be bookings for six to twelve months from now.
That's a major societal caveat.
Unfortunately, the last few years have proved that to be very accurate.
Uh, so what happens when they cancel like that, or do we-
So usually, it's just a deposit that's been paid, so it's somewhere between five hundred and seven hundred and fifty dollars, the balance of your rental is due thirty days before your event.
Yeah, gotcha.
A lot of people will pay payments as well, so they'll, they'll make hundred dollars or five hundred dollar payments here, a thousand dollar payments there, so that's paid before their due date.
So when those are canceled, you reduce your revenues booked already, and then that is what decreases your revenue.
But I guess it's staying, at least on the books, it's staying booked up, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And we actually do a lot more small events as well, the Cabot Caulfield Center has become a lot more popular, only that facility usually books out thirty to sixty days in advance versus six months to twelve months.
Okay, all right, I appreciate it. Okay, carry on, Municipal Airport.
Okay, the net cash flows are down eight thousand, uh, revenues are down three point one, and expenses are up four point nine. Okay, and then your next is just your cash accounts and what we just went over, and your expenditures, uh, your net change in funds, you'll see, funds are up fifty-eight, your debt service is down four oh one, your capital projects are now nineteen eight, and your grants are up fourteen, so net of the two point six. And then your next slide, uh, no, no, keep on, keep on, more, there's your sales tax. And as you can see, for this year, uh, in January, we're at seven eighty-four and five seventy-five, which far exceeds last year's four forty-seven. And ten years ago, at two hundred and eighty-six.
The number I found interesting was the building permits. Yeah, that was a huge one.
It's up, but then you saw the expenses and the other, that was also-
Well, we do third-party now for all the big stuff.
That's what, that was-
So you're not gonna make much on that, but we do make a little on everything except , uh, but it is still going.
Okay, Carolyn, is that it? Anybody have any questions for Carolyn? All right, thank you. That takes us to a closed meeting. Item thirty-one, uh, it's pursuant to Chapter five fifty-one Texas Government Code, in accordance with the authority contained in Section five fifty-one oh seventy-one legal, oh seventy-two real estate, uh, zero seventy-four personnel, and zero eighty-seven economic development. Uh, Kevin, it looks like we're under item B, which is economic development?
And real estate, both.
And real estate, B and D, okay, so, uh, specifically, we are tonight under, uh, closed meeting for item B, real estate under Texas Government Code, Section five fifty-one oh seventy-two, that's discussion regarding purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, Sky, that's the project name, correct?
Correct.
And then D is economic development under Texas Government Code, Section five fifty-one point zero eight seven, discussion regarding economic development negotiations, including commercial or financial information received from a business prospect seeking to locate, stay, or expand, enter near the City of McGregor, and to discuss economic development negotiations and/or to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect. So with that, it is eight twenty-eight, and we will stand in recess as we go into closed session, and we'll be out, um, shortly. George, thanks a lot.
Yes.
How they are in store to work?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know, some quickening or something like that. You don't even know it. Put every time.
Right there by the train station. Well, on this side of the...
All right, we are back in open session. It is 9:24. There are a couple of matters to address out of executive session, that being items 32 and 3. 32 is discussion and possible action regarding approval of sales contract for 18 acres of land in the McGregor Industrial Park. So Kevin, touch on that.
Council, you have in front of you an agreement for sale or purchase. Folks are here that are going to be writing the checks soon. And if you have any questions. 18 acres, plus or minus.
Hit the highlights, please.
It's plus or minus 18 acres with an option for 20 some odd more. That survey hadn't been completed yet. For a five-year option, they pay for that privilege after the second year is completed. Building a building and manufacturing facility, state-of-the-art manufacturing facility. That is... Why don't y'all step up and tell us what you're gonna do?
That'd be great.
Sergio, please. He says it so much better than me.
Thank you. I thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. We are looking to build a 137,000 square feet facility. As Kevin mentioned, it is state-of-the-art in that a lot of these machines are highly robotic and automated. What are we doing here? We are simply bringing in basic stock materials of steel and assembling them into beams and columns that form the basic structure for a lot of different facilities. They could be hangars, they could be schools, they could be shopping centers, they could be other manufacturing facilities. So we, our intent is to have this as our first US-based facility. We have one already in the north of Spain. And our markets are all over the world, although in recent years, our demand for the work in the United States has increased. So we, we've been looking at different areas and we like Texas and in particular, we came across this area. So available to answer any questions that you might have about what we're trying to do.
Anybody have anything?
How many people would you employ in this building?
The, because of the nature of the automation, we're looking at around 25 in a shift. We will work up to that number and then we will work up into multiple shifts.
Would you, would you work 24 hours?
Well, if the demand is there, we would. Probably not all of the lines that we would have there. But the intent would be yes, we would have a lot of ongoing activity. Not necessarily in the receiving and the shipping, but mainly what's happening on the inside for the evening shifts.
So if someone would get a deal tonight, what would you expect groundbreaking? How long? What do you think?
Well, we would. We'd start last week if we could. We, we have everything set and ready for the most part. We are negotiating with certain local entities because our intent is to try to use as much of the local resources as possible. This week is going to be telling for us, not only for the result of this evening's meeting, but also some of the subcontractors that we're dealing with. We would think, we'd like to see some movement within the next two weeks.
And operational by when?
Well, our intent is to have operations start in November. Our initial target was October, but November right now is what we would like to see.
And those 25 jobs potentially, what's, what are the, what's the average wage scale are you looking at?
It'd be north of 55K a year. Yeah, so they're higher paying jobs. They require a good understanding operationally either in the manufacturing processes fields or robotics.
Kevin, sales price of the land?
15,000 acres.
All right. Let me see where the, see if we can get a motion and see if there's anything else to discuss here. Is there a motion under item 32?
I make a motion to approve the sales contract for 18 acres of land in McGregor Industrial Park.
Second.
So motion is second under item 32. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. In a related matter, under item 33, is discussion possible action regarding approval of the development agreement for development of 18 acres of land located in a portion of McClennan County property ID 135917 McGregor Industrial Park.
It's pretty much become your standard development agreement. We had a few things that worked out here a little bit differently. The option land and the option language is a little different than what we've done before, but it's gonna work out real well. Other than that, it's a incentive package of 75% on a 380 agreement for the first five years and 25% for the next five years, which is what you did with Messer and what I think you will have indicated you're comfortable in offering. And beyond that, it's pretty straightforward. As you know, the TERS creates some little bit different ways of operating out there and that's all part of it. So it's pretty straightforward and ready to go.
One of the questions that the council had is how much this was gonna cost us out of pocket. Kevin, touch on that a little bit. I know we don't, can't pay exactly the cost, but just for an idea of...
Water is, water is across the street, sewer is on-site and the road base exists. So basically, the highest expense you're gonna have is boring under that road and the overlay. And give me a quick number, Jacob, you're the engineer. Just, just kidding, but it's, the cost for it to us is fairly insignificant.
Yeah, so we're not talking about bonds, borrowing, none of that to get this accomplished.
And the TERS money will be what we used to do it.
Yeah. Okay, and then immediately, 90% will go back into the TERS to fund what we've already been doing out there, which is primarily the rail. 10% comes back into the general fund immediately from the property tax.
The roads, the water and sewer will be paid for out of the TERS and they'll pay for that.
And ballpark on the investment to the city? Capital investment?
Capital investment in terms of the buildings
Yes, yes, sir.
is going to be about 12 million.
Okay.
And then you've got equipment, which is about the same.
All right. So roughly $25 million investment to the city.
A small project. I enjoy saying that and it's not. It's a big, it's a good project and we appreciate it.
It is. It is. All right, any, any other questions?
Merit Fabrication, so how long have you guys been in business?
Merit Fabricators or Fabrication LLC is really an affiliate of Allied Steel Buildings. 20 years for us, actually this month. But we just use the Merit name for the fabrication arm and that's what we did in Spain, that's what we're doing here.
Yeah, sorry, I butchered that name. Fabricators.
Yes.
Anything else? Hearing no further questions, all those in favor of item 33 say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. Wilkin McGregor.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah.
You won't be waiting on us. We'll get, we'll get it down. Well, the guy that's gonna make it, guy that's gonna make it happen is the man right in front of you and the guy right against the back wall.
Yes.
I don't think there was a motion that you got to speak.
Yeah?
I can make one.
You can not?
Make a motion regarding the agreement for development of 18 acres of land in McGregor Industrial Park.
Okay.
How's that?
Does it work? Is there a second to that?
Second.
A motion is second under item 33. Now all those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. All right. That motion carries. To 34, announcements from the city manager. All right, item 35, mayor and council, your requests and comments, please.
I have a request, the flags at the, I don't know, what do we call that?
At the corner?
At the corner, right where you come, you know, the intersection of 3217. Can we get some new flags put up there? They're looking a little raggedy.
New flags at the main intersection of 317 and Highway 84?
Yeah.
Are they getting tattered?
Yeah, they're pretty rough. I've seen that around town, actually. And I gotta get a new flag myself, it's looking a little...
We have another city flag put out, just curious.
Not that I'm aware of, but I'll find out.
Okay, anything else?
We're having the Avalos Memorial Cancer Walk on the 25th, if anybody would like to come.
Where?
At Amser Park, starts at nine till one. Door prices and stuff will be about 12, so...
The 25th of March.
Next week.
Two weeks. That'd be nice. We changed it to Avalos Memorial Walk after Lori and Natalie too this year, so... Anyway, so if anybody wants to come.
All right, with that, this meeting is adjourned at 9:36. Thanks to everybody.